Okay. Good evening, everyone. Our school committee meeting of August 3rd, 2015. It is exactly 6:30. I call this meeting to order. The meeting is being both audio and videotaped. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will have roll call. Before we begin roll call, we want to introduce our newest member, Ms. Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business. Welcome, Pamela.
Thank you very much.
Good to have you here with us.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
And so I'll start off with our veteran here.
Elizabeth Marcy-Boucher.
Deirdre Mayo.
Rich Fuchero.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Bill Flansika.
Pamela Blair, Business Manager.
Kathy Salady, Recording Secretary.
And also, while we have some introductions also, I'll turn around to Mr. Chairperson from the Charter Commission.
Dawn Starks.
Ed Ray Miller.
Thank you very much. And you are our first agenda item, so we'll kind of launch right into now meeting with the Charter Commission. So thank you both for being here, Dawn. Thank you also.
Well, we want to thank you for coming. We've come to pick your brain. As you know, our mission is to take a look at the current form of local government. We're interested in possible structural changes that could come and benefit our town in efficiencies, morale, just better functioning for the taxpayer, as well as for elected officials and municipal workers. Generally, how we've been doing it is relatively informal, so we can have a fairly free-flowing conversation and not take up too much of your time. So what we're looking for is your thoughts along the lines of how you interact with the rest of your local government. What works? What doesn't work? Where do you think there could be improvements or complete changes? And we would like it from your board perspective, not necessarily your personal perspective. I strongly encourage you to come to our public hearing if you have a personal opinion and voice it there. I also have my fellow committee man, Ray Miller, who will have some questions.
And also, I think, another committee member just walked in.
Yes, and Larry Levine has just joined us as well. And I'm sure he will have some questions. We just...
I had to get in here. Last time I sat in one of those seats, I went through the front door.
Oh, okay.
Did you get the hint? Did you get the hint?
Yeah.
So with that, Rich, if you want to...
Yeah, I took some notes, and I guess two thoughts will kind of try to roll into one. The first thought I have is I really appreciate that reminder article where Eric Madison kind of explained that I do have accountability. You know, that we have like a very silable effect in this town. One department does this, one department does this, and there's very little interaction at times when something major happens. The best example I can give you is I was helping at the Berthold Park Middle School during that full week electrical outage. And I remember a furious citizen came in and looked at all of us as we were working and said, "Who's in charge here? Who can I talk to? I've got two kids, and I have not electricity in the solar. And everybody just looked at each other, and no one had an answer who was in charge." And I think that's, and I think I would capture that very well, that reminder article about accountability. And I think here, we have it. Because if I can give you an example, if our test scores are low, that parent, that student, that family, a citizen knows they can call our superintendent, they can call the school committee, they can call the principal. We have a clear accountability chain of command. And as I like to see the same within the town, whatever you work. That's my major thought, is the same kind of accountability chain of command.
Very good. Ray, I know you had questions.
Just wondering if any of the others might have observations as to how your committee works with town committees or doesn't work with them. And I'm not putting any onus on school committee, but I'm just looking for where you see there might be difficulties, problems, places where there could be improvements.
I think, from my perspective on the board, I think that we have a good, I know Gordon has a very good working relationship with probably almost any office within town. And I think, and I say this with all due respect, because I know we are an enormous part of the budget.
Right.
I think sometimes we feel like it's our fault that it's always money problems. And we understand that everything, every penny, every person we hire, every book we order, is money off the town. And I think sometimes, I mean, at least I know, I feel sometimes going into these meetings that that's the feeling we get. Everybody's very nice, everybody's courteous, but it's just that feeling like we're just like eating up every penny that there is. And I think that fiscally, we try to be very sound as best as we can with all the demands that are put on us. I guess that's kind of how I feel sometimes. I think that we work well together, and they're respectful of it, but you just feel that. Maybe it's just me, but...
And I think we have an advantage. I think, and last call, maybe elaborate, I think we have a good work relationship with all the town departments. I say that because this is a very strong community focused on the children. So if we need help from DPW, the fire department, the police department, I think it's just natural, we get the best service possible. I, you know, there may be times where there may be some miscommunication, or maybe their priorities aren't the same as ours at that one moment, but for the most part, and I think part is also, our friend here has a very good relationship with everybody. But I think we do have a good relationship with all the town departments, and feel very strongly about that.
I mean, it is a different perspective, because we don't necessarily, being autonomous from everybody else, we don't report directly or are under the purview of the Board of Selectment or anybody else. So that is, has its advantages and its disadvantages, speaking on both sides, because as Rich said, sometimes there's miscommunication where DPW doesn't show up to mow the lawn or whatever because there's a football game or a soccer game. So, you know, we encounter those problems. But overall, I mean, it's an entirely different relationship based on the current structure, where in a different port, in a different structure, there may be more interaction between a town manager and superintendent.
And in relation to charter changes, there's a very limited, narrow way any major changes could happen on school committee, which would be, I believe, its number and term length. That's pretty much it. And you are kind of a unique animal. So it's good to hear your perspective from that.
I'm curious as to whether or not, and from either side, there's been any attempt to work together as far as hiring and firing practices, looking at job descriptions so that they are kind of equated as far as responsibilities are concerned?
Well, this example's right here. I mean, Eric Madison served on the committee.
Sarah Manard.
Sarah Manard served on the committee. So questions would develop, but, you know, we, and once again, Gordon's leadership, we do reach out to other departments when we're hiring a certain position to have them be on our committees.
Right. We definitely work very closely with the town accountant's office, the town clerk's office. So those, I think, are pretty strong relationships, but like any relationship, you have to continue to work at it and make sure that communication is flowing well both ways.
So your hiring practices, we'd say, are similar to what the town has?
I think they're becoming more similar. When I first started, and there was, I believe, a consultant on the town side, was it the Trainee's?
Yeah.
Briefly in HR, we started to look at some of the policies at that point. And so those discussions, though not as consistent and focused, come up through department head meetings, and we do look at those type of things. Nick Bro, who no longer is here, was excellent at department head meetings, making sure that we're all were aware and that even though sometimes the schools might be operating on their own for certain mandates, that we talked about how the town was going about it and how the school department was going about it. And if there were ways to share, where could we do that?
Now, school department has its own policies and all of that.
Right.
And they're literally written down, correct?
Right. They're actually on our webpage. And we just revised, it was a three-year process, three years, about?
Three years.
Yeah, I think it was three-year. It's a big book. Very exciting process, Mr. Fuchero. But the Mass Association of School Committees basically led us through that. And so a lot of our policies begin with their model policy.
Yeah. So they're tried and true practices.
Right.
So I'm thinking the modeling may suit the town well in the opposite direction.
It could. It's a model that works very well.
I think also, even the way, like amongst our schools, as far as how they're kind of run, like each principal kind of has their own way of doing things, but when you're hiring somebody for one department, whether it's a literacy coach, it's the same as the one that you would hire in all of the schools, regardless of what the, whereas I think in the past, it wasn't quite as autonomous. It was like, somebody might have said, "Okay, I need this," but their job duties might have been a little bit different than the other school. And I think it's kind of been streamlined. I think the whole process of hiring and how it's done, even the word and the language we use is the same within all of the schools, just so that everybody's on the same page. I know that's something you started when you first, so even the kids know the language for certain things from year to year to year.
They're the end user.
Yes.
Well, more often we can get them in the know that are on PR.
Going back to policy, we have a policy subcommittee, it's actually Beth and I, that involves Gordon, as in, it involves Pam, where if something comes as a revision, we, the subcommittee first has to approve it, vet it, and then bring it to the full committee for approval. So this is a practice that we also found, and we started this practice when we redid the policies. We had never done it in the past, we just kind of like handed it off, let an attorney review it, and then brought it back. It's a more efficient process that we have now, and it works. We get the policies enacted much quicker, something I think that Charter Commission probably, it would behoove the Charter Commission to look at it, because it's a model that really works.
And you can go on the website, and you can go up, you can put any subject in under the policies, and it'll pull up all the policies that have anything to do with that subject. And if they get changed, they get changed as soon as we let the MAS C know, because they're facilitating it for us, they get changed immediately. And then if...
Immediately, it might be stolen.
Well, within two months, but, you know, they do get changed.
A lot quicker.
No, be telling them, I think they've been pretty good.
They're pretty good, yeah.
It's how fast we get to it, you know?
They manage the online portion of it for us.
And I'm sure there's something out there that is more at a government level that would be similar, you know, whether it's zoning, or it's town policies, whatever they might be, where they're a little more user-friendly to access.
But I think, you know, we can speak this way because of our structure. And I would say to Charter Commission, we need that position that can pull us all together, centralize all the different departments, be it a town manager, be it a mayor, some type of position that can kind of pull it all together, and frankly, operate the day-to-day, day-to-day issues and situations. And I also think we need that at Town Hall, too, a nice centralized, one person, one position, however you want to put it.
And clears standardized directions and policies.
Correct.
Yeah, I have a concern on, I'll go back to the hiring practices, because I see what has transpired over the last 10 years. I work in the Human Resources Department over in Long Meadow, and, not that I have responsibility here, but I see what's happened over the last 10 years and all the requirements the federal government has put on hiring. And the thing that concerns me is the consistency that we have from A to Z in whatever department it is to the last department in town. And I think it's very important that they be there. It's encouraging to hear you tell us that, you know, you've got some good, solid policies there, and, you know, it's just, I think it's important for us to make certain that whatever policies that we establish and are required, but are consistent throughout the town.
Right.
And it's not hiring, it's firing, how you terminate an employee, how you promote an employee, discipline an employee.
I mean, it also sounds like how you may, to continue with you, right, if you evaluate employee, I mean, my understanding is some town employees have not been evaluated for years.
Yes.
Now, in our situation, once again, it's a yearly, right?
Yeah.
Every yearly, every one of our employees is...
You're absolutely right.
Yes, so I mean, there's quite a little bit of work that has to be done there.
Yes.
And some of that, right, the state did step in around educator evaluation, as you probably know, and so that drove almost the force of reform, if you will, across the state. And so that has changed for every school district in the Commonwealth.
Well, that's good to hear.
Right.
That's good to hear.
But I would think that at the school level, it's probably a little more involved, because you have to come in, you have to view what's happening with the students, and I would think that at the town level, although you don't want to push it aside as it not being important, it is important, but it probably wouldn't take as much time per employee as maybe the evaluation of the teacher. You know, it would be more like, you know, for evaluating a pair or somebody like that, it's not quite as extensive.
Certainly, yeah, there's certainly definitely requirements that are imposed on school employees that are not imposed on town employees. Likewise, there's some that are imposed on town employees that don't, aren't applicable to the school. But I think as long as we're consistent and adhere to those policies, I think that's the thing that's important.
And I think it's important for municipal employees, including school department, it sounds like school department, if you work for the school department, you know where the rules are, what the lines are, what's expected of you.
Right.
I think it's unfair to ask employees to work and not know where the lines are, not know what the course of action is if something should happen. And I agree that we need consistency, it's very good.
And I think we also go over, as new jobs come up, we go over the job description and make sure it's still relevant, you know?
Right, we update job descriptions.
Are they doing more than they did? Are they doing less than they did? Have we, you know, moved to different positions in different ways? And I think that that's done almost every time a, you know, a job position comes up, it's looked at.
Do you, how do you evaluate a job as to, say, what the pay grade or the job level?
That's a great question.
Mrs. Smith, this leadership we usually have, we usually request as a school committee for some type of survey to be done. Salay reaches out to our various school districts, usually the collaborative, this is the seven towns, and so we get a range, we get an idea of the responsibilities that they have compared to ours. So we have a very good compare and contrast. And then Mrs. Smith kind of leads us in a very productive discussion, and it's usually going to an executive session.
Okay. Go ahead.
Following up on that, have there been any discussions with town departments on pay parity? In other words, you have secretaries here, and the town has secretaries, and yet we have heard there's disparity between those positions, between the schools and the town departments? Any discussions or any thoughts on that?
No, that's a great question. We have not had discussion around salary and compensation. We here have roughly six different groups that we negotiate with, secretaries being one of them. So on that group, it's just school district secretaries are in that group. The most we've done with that type of thing has been around negotiations, and it was somewhat influenced, I think, by appropriations members, asking if town department heads would like to sit down and just discuss how we negotiate with various groups, what the town is looking at in terms of strategy, and how do we make that more consistent. So we did have some meetings last year and the year before. The attorney, I think, that sat in is no longer with Sullivan Hayes and Quinn, Jay Talbot, was somewhat prominent in those meetings, helping us kind of organize and stay on task of what maybe we should be looking at.
Because all of our secretaries have different, some are full year, some are school year, some are regular secretaries in office, some are library secretaries, there are librarians. So they've all got different sort of steps.
Job descriptions.
Job descriptions, yeah.
Another area, purchasing. Any discussions with town departments about, could there be collective purchasing?
We do have discussions around that, and actually, we, and I believe DPW is part of this, we purchase diesel fuel. We go through the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, DPW joins us in that, and we go as one large group and lock in on a price. That's probably the best example, but...
Technology, too.
That's a good point, thank you. The relations...
All that technology purchase goes through...
IT department. Right. I think you have very strong relationships, good relationships, between the department heads. And so that's been not only a benefit, say, when we did operate the shelter without real guidelines as to, okay, what are we supposed to be doing to operate a shelter for a week? I thought we did a pretty good job accomplishing that, and then from that, sort of debriefed the hot wash and started to look at what should that structure look like. So you have a very strong group of department heads across all departments in the town, and we do share in those type of discussions. So technology's a great example. If, the other thing is, if any equipment is no longer needed in a specific department, it gets advertised out to all the other departments, you know, do you need a study carol and a desk set up, or computer desk, that type of thing.
What?
Separate subject. Your thoughts on town meeting as it is? Good? Go ahead.
You mean personally or at school?
As a school committee.
You can comment personally.
Obviously, we would love to see more. You know, more of our people show up at town meetings being parents that have students in the school. You know, we feel that we don't see enough of our parents showing up at town meeting. And I get it, we all have, you know, school-aged children, it's tough to be out late at night. Personally, I think I like the town meeting, I just wish that we could get more people involved in the town meeting, especially parents, because it really, we are such a big part of the budget. I really would love to see more of them there, and I just don't know how to do that. Yeah, I would, it breaks my heart to not send me to go to these meetings, because they're really important, and I think I like the idea of being able to go and have a say. But at the same time, you can't have the same 250 people making decisions the less than that last time.
Oh, you're being generous.
I know. I'm counting the flies on the ceiling, you know, but it's, to me, I mean, that's a shame. And then they complain.
Right.
And they yell at everybody who's there, like they're getting something for nothing, and you're not. You're, they're getting nothing.
I take the opposite view, I think it's obsolete. I mean, we go first...
It is, but that's why it's obsolete, yes.
But we go through such a rigorous process, develop our budget, and the appropriations committee, God bless them, they're going to be surprised I said this.
I know. They work very hard.
They work so hard and they're so good at balancing all the needs of the towns.
On every now and then.
And then you get to that town meeting, and you're just sitting there shivering that one person's going to get up there and bring up some topic that's not related at all, and they're going to bolt down the button after all you've done.
Right.
I think the town meeting is obsolete.
And that could happen.
Right.
Absolutely. I'm done with town meeting.
And then where are you?
That's probably obsolete.
That's the question, and then where are you going?
I prefer, but I understand where you're coming from.
The other issue about town meeting is it takes, we have two town meetings a year.
Right, I know, it takes a lot of hours.
It takes forever to get, if there's a serious financial issue, you need to call a special town meeting to address it, okay? There are other forms of government that could be either monthly or bimonthly, or call a meeting when something happens. And I think it would, you know, if we do away with town meeting, we could speed up the process and run more efficiently.
Right. And there would still be access for taxpayers. And usually, you would attract invested taxpayers, meaning they have researched things, and you've got an invested, say, council who has researched it, researched it. So you've got two knowledgeable parties. It is difficult when you have one party who is not knowledgeable at all, or you need people at that town meeting, and your article is number 37, and, you know, they're gone.
Let me just say this to you, Mr. Chairperson. One of my friends has a business, and he wanted to push a certain article through, and he came to me for advice. I guarantee him, we'll get that article written, you put 50 people in that audit time, and we'll pass it.
I know.
No matter what it is. All you need is 50 people with loud voices, and you can pass it.
Right.
60 people, maybe.
Right.
So that's the other inequity there, too. And you don't see those people again after they've got their article passed.
You're right, you'll see them get up and leave. And I've seen it, it's because I've seen, I've been to a lot of town meetings, but I've seen it with...
We see that in towns, right.
I've seen it with school salaries, I've seen it with tennis courts, I've seen it with the library building, and I've seen it with other things, you know? And articles passed, and you see a group of people get up and leave.
And it's not necessarily the voice of the people, it's the voice of one person.
Right. I remember my first, very first town meeting, I had just been elected, and the stadium came out. And you were barely even aware of what was happening. It had been on our Capitol, it needed to be done, but it was taking its turn along with everything else on Capitol. And all of a sudden, it was happening, and I think that we were all kind of taken aback, the people there at the time, because we were like, and I'm like, is this really how this works? And it got passed, and then those people all got up, and they left. I'm not saying I don't like it out there, but I'm just saying, we've been getting picked on for that Capitol project, like it was our fault, and it was the town people who came that voted for it, and it was a decision made at the town meeting. So you're right, in a lot of ways. No, I agree, and I think what's hard is just the change of if we went to something different, I would want to know that as a regular person, I could still have access to the information and know that I can still have an opinion, in how it's being, money being...
But it's funny we're talking about it, because I think, to me, my intuition tells me that town meeting is going to be the lightning rod, whether we keep it or not. That's going to be the thing that people are going to notice the most. You want me to do a town meeting, then I can just see people get very angry about that.
Then ask them, how many have they gone to?
The lightning rod.
But Bill, I like how you just stated it to that, you could also always call a special town meeting and just let the others, you know? And then who's going to be in charge of making the decisions? Who's going, you may have a town manager, but then who gets put on these boards or whatnot? And then who's going to run for these things? And who's, you know, is it going to be an even distribution of the town and their needs, you know? And there's all those different levels.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, yes. And that's the thing, so my question to you is, if there is some sort of change in the form of government we have, how would that affect the school system? Because I echo Bill's, that, you know, we have autonomy, and I think we do well as a school system, but I would be concerned for what a change would be, and I agree with Bill, Rich, that, you know, there needs to be more accountability on the town end, because I feel we do well here.
We would make, no, we...
We do.
We do, okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, you're relatively autonomous, and there are certain things, you know, in terms of percentage of your budget or whatnot, it's going to stay pretty much where it is.
Sort of. In some cities, the mayor sits on the chair.
Okay, right, right.
In fact, most cities.
But we're not there yet.
No. What is your timeline, Mr. Chairperson?
We've got a very, we're very ambitious. We would like to have the charter on the ballot for the April 12 municipal elections. Otherwise, we've got to kind of sit and wait. And I would say, one of the consensuses that we have on our commission so far is that our town needs some help, and sooner is better than later. Can't tell you right now what we're going to come up with, we're starting down the road in very fast but deliberative fashion. We've gone through, we've done an awful lot. I counted up, this is when we total meeting number, I believe, 42, we've had, we have done our due diligence. So now, we've done all our fact gathering, so everyone has a really good idea of what's going on, not only here, but other forms of government. And as I had mentioned, we hired a consultant who has written many charters and is very familiar with helping us make our decisions. They don't get to make the decisions, but they've got the wealth of experience to help us make the right choice, and in a expedient manner, because we don't have time to waste.
I appreciate it.
Have you gone to, like, other towns that have switched over?
Yes, we have.
Have you found anything that functions?
Well, we had...
I'm sure it's not my opinion still, right?
We had a town manager come in and talk with the committee, and one of the things he said, he said, "You can have the worst form of government, but if you have good people, it's going to work. You can have the best form of government, and if you have rotten people in there, it's going to, it's not going to function." So it really comes down to the people who are serving the community. I think, and, you know, there's four people that are here in this room tonight that are on the commission, and I think all four of us struggle with the very questions that you're, you know, you ask. I mean, what's the legislative body that we should have? What's the executive body that we should have? How should we organize the town? Should we have elected committees, appointed committees? Should we do away with committees? You know, and what, the reason we went, and we've talked to everybody, is we want their opinions. What they see works, what they see that doesn't work. We've gone to the different towns and communities to look at their form of government. We talked to Nick Barrow when he was here, we talked to Nick Barrow when he was in Wilbraham, because there's a little level, there's a different level of authority that he has in Wilbraham, a little higher authority than he had here in East Long Meadow. We've talked to other towns, you know, a town with a mayor. You know, so we've tried to get a broad perspective of all the different forms of government that would be available to us. Have we found a perfect one? No. At least the ones I've been to, I'd have to say no. They have advantages, they've got disadvantages, there's nothing perfect about it. But I can, I'll speak for myself. I think the committee, the commission is very knowledgeable, they have good minds, and they ask some good questions. And some of the questions that have come up have made me change some of my thoughts. And I think that's what we're looking for.
Appreciate it. Wilbraham TV, your meetings are usually on Thursday, is it?
Yes.
Yes. Right now, we are meeting every other Thursday night. We are meeting this Thursday. That may, we start at 6:30 Council on Aging Building.
Let the reminder, like, somebody, try to get the word out so they actually know, we've gone to 42 different places, we've done this, we've done that. Let them know that you've done this, because I think people are like, oh, they just pulled this out of nowhere. When it comes up to a vote, and they're not going to come anywhere near understanding the importance of what you're doing and the process, and how much time and effort it's taken, and that it's a thoughtful process. Because I think people just get it in their minds that, you know, it's a power trip, and it's not.
No, it's not. And it's, and you're right. When it comes down to the point where we put something in place, then our job is to go out and educate the voters of the town as to why we're proposing this. Yeah, and that's, that's a big, that's a big, is probably as big a job as putting it together.
And do you have another date set for a public forum?
Yes.
Mid-October. We were thinking the week after town meeting. And we're reserving the auditorium. Because at our first public hearing, seeing as 10 years ago, oh, how many people showed up? Less than 15.
Yes.
I think three, or something.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, 15. Right, the public hearing in the first, we had another charter, elected charter commission 10 years ago. And the public hearing opened and closed, I think it was 13 minutes.
I'm sorry.
Close enough. But very few people showed up. So we really didn't know what to expect. So we booked the Council on Aging media room, which is fairly decent size, and they were packed in there. So I thought, this actually was a great opening salvo, that people are connected, they are listening. So we will be here next go-round.
Well, let us know, we can always make sure we say something about it and really try to get some word out through other forums.
We appreciate that.
Because communication is key.
That's exactly it. And I know for a lot of my peers, social media tends to be a big place where I can put something, and it gets a lot of my peers' attention.
Hear that, right, technology?
Yeah, right.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, I still got the pen.
We still need the sign somewhere in the center of town.
But we want to thank you very much for your input. Very interesting.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Has the school committee or the schools had a need like a citizen to go to Town Hall and get something approved? And ask, where do I go, or who needs to give approval? Have they had that in your tenure?
Such as an administrator, a parent, or employee?
No, no, I'm talking about the schools, an example. I mean, if you needed to place a sign on the front lawn, technically, you'd need approval.
Right, generally, the approval goes through the school committee and the planning board.
And the building inspector. And you've had experience doing that, or something like that?
Yeah, we have. The baseball sign that's out there for the games during the summer.
Any communication problems there?
No, one of the strong points that I've said a couple of times, so I'm sorry for repeating myself, is that you have good relationships and good communication between department heads. So if something, because there was initial confusion around, may have been the baseball sign or one of the other signs, planning thought school committee had already seen it, and so Rob McDonald reached out, and I said, "No, that hasn't been on our agenda yet." She said, "Okay, it should start with you, then come to us." I said, "Fine, we'll set it up, put it on the next agenda."
Very good.
That's it, boss.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you Thursday.
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming. I'd love to, a voice message, asking how to get it into your meeting. Thanks again.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay. Nice of you to come by. Bring us back to our agenda. Item number three, approval of minutes. 3.1, approval of June 22, 2015 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the June 22, 2015 regular session meeting minutes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion?
Well, I'm going to need to abstain.
Okay. And I just want a couple of, Ms. Salenti, that was quite a meeting, and you, your notes were comprehensive and very detailed. Thank you. So here we have, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And one abstention, Ms. Salenti. Communications, I have just one quick one, and that's, I'm going to remind everyone that Greg Thompson is, has a fair responsibility, and he's not with us tonight. But does anybody have anything to add, or something at all?
I'm still summer brain, I know.
It's still, it hasn't happened yet.
No, it's not, it's a tough one, that first one.
Number five, opportunity for business committee, we're all set there. Number six, superintendent's report, convocation assembly, Mrs. Smith.
Just a reminder, really, this year, our convocation is on Monday, August 31st. We have refreshments for everyone at 8:00 AM, and then the program starts at 8:30.
And once again, I have to follow Ms. May, who was a hit at that last convocation. A lot of people saying, are you going to be as funny as DJ? Are you going to talk about what DJ like, I'm sorry.
Pressure's on there, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm going to be my usual serious self. And now, for the highlight of the meeting, the first ever presentation by our new assistant superintendent for business, Ms. Pamela Bligh, you're on for 6.2 and 6.2.2.
Thank you, and thank you for your warm welcoming. I would like to bring forward a few gifts. Mountain View has $713.15 for a juvenile diabetes research foundation. They did a walk, and they got 10% of the funds, so that's pretty great when you think they raised $7,000.
How about the sentence there? The representative from JDRF stated that, to her knowledge, no one in the school ever rated that much money.
It was impressive, yeah.
Impressive is a great word.
And it was a very hot day, those children were walking outside, and it was hot.
Yeah, they did.
And it seems that the school gets back some money.
Yeah? So do I have a motion?
I move to approve the donation of $713.50 to Mountain View School.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Anybody in opposed? Nope, we're all set there, Ms. Salenti. And 6.2, point to Burson Park Gifts.
Yes, they raised $187.25 at the Launch Trampoline Park. As well, do you need to vote each one second?
I think we can do both at the same time.
Yeah, we can do both at the same time.
Thank you. So they also raised $136.01 from the Stop and Shop Rewards.
This goes into gift accounts, that would...
That's correct.
So do I have a motion to accept the Burson Park two gifts?
Okay, I'll move to accept Burson Park Gifts, Launch Trampoline for the amount of $187.25, and the A+ Rewards, Avold Financial, in the amount of $136.01.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Yes, yes. We unanimous again, Ms. Salenti. Old business is nothing, new business. 8.1, National Night Out. It's tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, it is National Night Out. This is the, I want to say, it might be 10th year, I think I've done National Night Out. So every, every year for the last 10 years, the first Tuesday in August, the community comes out, sponsored by our police department, but it's a theme that goes beyond East Long Meadow, throughout the state of Mass, or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and maybe nationally, I believe, as well. So it truly is a theme that law enforcement, connecting with the community, bring people out in the summertime, enjoy some food, that Mr. Pachero might be...
Yes, you have to visit the...